All right, I'd like to call the village council July 13th, 2021. Meeting in order, so we have a full quorum in attendance. There's no one to participate remotely, so that's good. And I first need an adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes?
Yeah, we need to add a new business number two.
So are you stuck?
Hold on, you don't even have to write it down. I'm gonna give this to you, but I'm gonna read it first.
Okay.
It's gonna be discuss and consider entering into standard water and sewer services. Extension agreement with Union County Water and Sewer District for Village Hall 10006, Martin's Hill Road.
All right. Anything else? All right, I'd like to get a motion to approve the agenda as presented. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We're all here.
Next up, we have.
This week.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No echo of anything?
Echo, echo.
All right. So first up, we have public comment. Do we have anyone here to speak?
Crickets.
Rubber holt's piece.
Crickets? No one, we're not doing the online stuff, are we?
We still are, but no one's here.
No one's there, okay.
Did we email you anything fun that you'd like to read to us?
They did, but they rescinded it.
An email was sent?
An email was sent, I just talked to the person. They said they don't need it right now, so we're good.
Okay, all right, moving forward.
Interesting.
We'll look for reports and updates. First up is manager's report. A solid waste discussion?
Yes.
Of reassessing yard waste.
All right, so I'm gonna try to go work through this in detail. I passed out a couple of things at your table. There's a little packet with a paper clip that has this piece of paper on it. I want to remind you all first of how we came up with the initial cost and the collection fee that we would be generating to the property owners that would pay for the service. If you look at the top box, you have the salary and the benefits of the full-time person, increased attorney bills in the event that we had to pursue legal action for some of those penalties and fees, miscellaneous of 15,000, office supplies, reporting, all that kind of detail that may be needed. And then also, a portion of my salary potentially going to solid waste, depending on how much oversight I'll have on that project. So about $95,000 of static costs that we anticipated in addition to the actual cost of service. The collection cost is gonna be 1.5%, that's what the county charges, so we would then pass that off to the resident. At some point in time, we will have a fuel surcharge and a CPI increase. The first year, we will not, so that numbers, that placeholder is there, but we don't have that the first year. The base amount, which is for weekly solid waste collection, which is your household garbage, is 1370. That works out to $328,000 a year. Going down the list, these are things that y'all opted to do and not do based off of the discussion we had during that time. No bulk, no yard, no paint. Christmas trees were included at zero cost. Electronics, y'all inquired about the allowable weight, which is 40 pounds. So that's in there at 17 cents per unit per month. The white good collection event was estimated at around $24,000. However, that's coming slightly less, and we'll go into that in just a second, but I just wanna tell you how we first initially came up with this estimate. So going down to the bottom, you see, I've circled the annual collection fee of $243 a year, which pro-rata for the first year would be $61 for those three months. So residents would pay $61 for April, May, and June of 2022. That's how we come up with that number. Then the following year, they would be charged $244 for the next year. Is everybody on the same page with me? Okay, so that's forward to what transpired after we sent out the public release. We got a lot of comments back, which is the second little packet that's in your, this packet of information, all these comments. You can take it home and read it. Majority of them are basically asking if we're gonna do yard waste. That was not something that y'all had decided to do at that time, because I think we were operating under the assumption that most of our residents had vendors that collected their own yard waste debris, so we didn't think it was gonna be a service that would be utilized here. However, we have received a lot of questions and comments concerned about it. So you can read them, but I want you to turn the page to that one, the, this looks like this. Those are the current rates that our residents see now, and this is not based off of any HOA special pricing or senior citizen pricing, if they're getting that. So this is typically what our residents are seeing now. And flip the page over. My, you don't have to read all this, I'll explain this next page. It looks like this, really long paragraph. My approach to this was to try to get a percentage cap and get active to just pay us a percentage of what that cost would be. For example, 20% of our people, 30% of our people use this service, only charge us 20, 30% of the cost of service that you normally would charge, plus a little bit of inflation because they obviously can't do the per-unit cost at the cost they would do all of the residents. So I was assuming they'd charge, I don't know, 40% higher than what they normally would. However, they came back at, I don't know, 150% higher than what a normal operation would be if we did that every resident. So 30% option equaled $86,000 a year, and that's only 600 households. If you flip over the page, adding yard waste for all houses is only $72,000 a year. So it's actually cheaper to do every household than it is to only do 30%. This is the option, this is what the price breakdown equates to if we wanted to add yard waste now. Yard waste is $3 per unit per month, which equates to about $36 per resident. Obviously, we've already advertised for that first year and subsequent years, so we would have to get information out about subsequent years later and figure out how we will absorb the first year in-house, based off of, that rate's already been set and it's already in the tax bills to be generated. I don't think we can change that now. Chaplin can tell me if I'm wrong.
You're correct, so we've already done the assessment and with the budget.
We can do it next year, but we'd have to absorb that first year. Luckily for us, it's only three months, so it's only a deficit of around $14,000. I did built in, build in a $10,000 contingency, so if, you know, using that were negative $3,000 or $4,000, assuming nothing else is needed, then I was gonna use that $10,000 for. So at the very bottom of your sheet, in the red, those are your totals, were $6.54 short per person, which is roughly $26 a household. And using that contingency, it's about $3,000 or $4,000 that we'd have to pull from fund balance if we needed it. So if y'all wanna add it now, we can, just know that there is a potential for us to have to put in some fund balance if we don't.
May I make a suggestion? We throw this out to council. Since the, and I don't know how much this will affect it, but it will, should affect it, is it possible, this question for you too, that if we were to remove the electronics, because it's only 40 pounds, I mean, most people can get rid of a 40-pound, sometimes they'll throw it in their garbage containers if it's 40 pounds, but if we remove that, then we can add that into the cost of, okay, we're replacing the electronics, because we're not doing white goods, right?
Yeah, we are.
We're doing that?
But it's gonna be out location.
Okay, right, 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 right. Anyway, so the seven cent savings, number one, from a contract thing can re-say, hey, let's put that seven cents, we're not gonna have you pick up electronics anymore. Let's put that towards the thing which, you know, that helps with that? You know, I'm, what's that?
It's $4,000.
Yeah, so, and then the other question I had on the waste, how many will they take? Did they tell you how many bags?
Of yard waste?
Yeah. Okay, so that's important, only because, I will tell you, my existing company will only take two at a time, and I probably have six to eight when I have that. So that's, that's a question.
But I mean.
It's a fair question.
Do they do it bulk? I mean, you know, because I know, like, the city of Charlotte, you just put it out there, they can buy, just shovel it in a truck, so I don't know if they're gonna do bag or bulk.
Well, they are, the company I use currently requires you to put it in a bag, because they're not gonna go spend it, they're literally looking to throw those things on, whether it's a device that throws it up on the truck or it's in a container, you know, thing, because it is yard waste. So it's different for everyone.
I know they're, yeah, I know they're not gonna allow garbage bags. It has to be tied up with something.
So what do you do with grass clippings?
You're gonna have to get a container so you could.
There's not a third bin?
They don't give bins.
Because I know the Foxhole now, they're requiring paper bags, and they give you bags to do your yard waste in, because they don't want plastic bags, because it's not biodegradable. So they wanna use paper bags to put the yard waste in. So I don't know what the requirements are for Union County, I just know for the Foxhole.
Yeah.
So it may be that they, we'll have, we'll have to check and see how they're gonna collect it, I guess.
Yeah, so it is a concern, because if you do, if you do three times a year, major clippings and stuff like that, the regular stuff, again, that's a fair point a lot of people are making, what are they gonna do with that? A lot of people just end up putting it in a bag and putting it at the bottom of their container and throw the regular household waste on top of it, you know, so, but it will get discovered by them, but we just wanna know what the specifics are on that.
Well, that, I mean, we know that's gonna be the case, and we obviously can't regulate that, and we will say that that's illegal, you can't do it, it's gonna happen. What, what we do, I don't, you know, I don't know. We have not created any rules or ordinances to allow the citizens to know what they can and can't do, so we will have to do that at some point in time before we start the service, but technically, per active standards, they're not gonna allow combing and yard debris.
Are you guys okay with considering removing the electronics and saving it seven cents if that's what it's gonna cost? I mean, it's, it helps a little bit to get to a, and I would hope that they would say, okay, we'll sub that out.
It's 17 cents, too.
Huh?
17 cents.
17 cents is what it is?
Yeah. Well, that, so with the contingency 10 and that four, that covers it, right?
Yeah, now, and that's assuming, you know, put that $10,000 in for other things, so that's assuming nothing else comes up that's needed, so I just wanna make sure y'all are aware, if something pops up that, you know, they think about or discover, we may have to potentially tap into fund balance.
And then the following year, it would be included?
We would have to increase it, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, three months is actually a good thing, because it gives you three months to start with your projections.
Give an idea of what's happening.
Yeah, you just don't, if it was six or nine months, it would be more risk with, which I, we would really be in debt with the six years that had it, with the six or nine-month period versus three.
I'm fine with taking the electronics out from my standpoint, I don't know about everybody else, but it would be fine with me.
So looking over these comments, there's a lot of people voicing their opinion about the yard waste. There's not anybody saying anything about the electronics or, you know, that, that's great, we have that service. They're all saying, why not yard waste? I mean, there's quite a lot of comments about it.
Well, I think a lot of people in some divisions that cut their own grass and blow their own leaves want that service. I mean, that would be my guess. Not everybody hires a dunnar out here.
Right. Yeah, that's where, that was my recommendation as far as just looking at this at first glance, with their electronics. I don't think it's, the electronics is gonna be a thing, but. And we confirmed all those were, it's hard to confirm that all of them were clearly residents that were voicing their concerns?
Um, no.
No way to tell that?
We didn't confirm anything, yeah, no.
I was ready to tell.
Most people identified where they lived, so, yeah.
Cool. So what, what do we need? Do we need a motion to consider something or to do something, or what?
If I can get a consensus, number one, if everyone is okay with us removing the electronic collection, because we had previously said that we were gonna do that, so.
That's fine.
Is everyone okay with that?
Removing what?
The electronics.
The electronics.
Okay.
So there's a consensus, just for the record. Secondly, adding the yard waste at a $3 per unit per month for all residents? If I can get a consensus on that?
Yep.
Again, we're still saving them an average of close to $100 or?
Yeah, I mean, you look at some of the comments, and I'm not sure who these people are using it, I've taken $64 a year, but.
$0.20.
Trust me, at our next town hall, we'll have the, we'll have the opportunity to address it, in the fact that we're trying to eliminate the wear and tear on the roads that we now own, and we're trying to get better customer service, because we're doing it collectively.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't know who they're getting for $164, it can cost you $100 to take it yourself.
And if it's an average of $100 savings, what is that? Think about that, what is that savings from a tax percentage when we start talking about, oh, we went from five cents to six cents? You know, we saved them $100 per household, that typically is about 25% of the average tax bill, is what that is, because the average tax bill is around $500.
All right, you good?
Yeah, I'm good. Couple of things I wanna mention to you guys is, I just wanna reiterate, the previously stated annual fee moving into 2022 would be $244, so we will have to get some information out there to the public that lets them know that it's actually gonna be $270, not $244. And I did wanna mention to you all that the cost of service will be according to us initially. We will be reimbursed on the taxpayer, so we will have to front that cost for a couple of months, just so y'all are aware.
Excuse me, and we collect that in the tax?
We do.
Okay, great, all right. Any questions from council?
I also provided in your little packet here the frequently asked questions, if y'all have any questions that you get from residents this year.
It's, did we, because I mean, I saw some of the questions that were on there about when, like, if they need an extra bin, they can get it at a charge directly to them?
Yes.
Is that in there?
Uh, no.
When, if they currently, like, what do they do? Like, I saw a bunch of questions about, well, what do we do? When do we switch over? When do we stop paying it?
Okay, we will reiterate those.
Yeah.
Bins, when the service starts.
Yeah, and then, like, how do you switch over?
Okay.
There is language in the agreement, or in the template agreement that was finalized, but it said additional services will be billed directly to the property owner, and that, we'll emphasize that though.
But people are asking, they're like, I need, you know, two trash bins, you know, and one of them was like, you know, I'm happy to pay for it, I just don't know what I need to do, so we just need to.
She's talking about the communication piece, so we'll, but we have to get the agreement done too, and we did make sure that was in there, I think, at our cost, so it won't be as much as what they normally would charge.
Yeah, I'll be curious to see how they want to receive it, to your point, paper bags or, you know, if they.
And I'll ask about the, how many bags of yard waste and what kinds of bags?
What, what?
I'll ask about the yard waste, the number of bags.
Yeah. No, well, number that they allow, and in what kind of container do they want of those two things? Okay.
That's all the questions I have.
All right, any questions from council? I have to excuse myself for one second, so if you need to go, I'm just grabbing my phone. I will be right back. Next up, we have planner's report. And that is Hunter.
That one, I wrote you, I'll be back.
I'll be right back.
So I did wanna take a second to introduce Hunter Nestor, he's our new planner, has several years of experience in planning, he worked for Western Cobb.
Western Pima Council Governments.
Prior to coming to Marvin, so let him say a couple words, and we're welcome.
Like Christina said, I'm Hunter Nestor, I'm here from, came here from Western Pima Council Governments, where I spent the last three years, started there right after I graduated grad school from App State, got my MPA. So happy to be here, and in regards to the planner's report, don't have anything, but, you know, I look forward to kinda, you know, be able to speak to you guys individually and meet you one-on-one, as well as, I guess, any questions specifically you can ask now, or feel free to follow up with me after this, but I'm getting acclimated, it's taken a little time, but once again, it's been good so far, so I'm happy to be here.
Thank you.
Happy to have you.
Kirk Christina's been keeping me busy.
It's been, it's been a pretty busy first week and a half, but I like to be kind of always on the go.
Good. And I'm sorry, I missed it, you said it, where do you live?
I currently still live in Hickory.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, I'm commuting. I bought a townhome back in December, don't know how I, if that was a smart decision to enter now, but, yeah. My, my parents live in the Lake Norman area, so eventually, the treat hasn't been too bad on me so far.
Yeah.
But, you know, like, tonight, with having a meeting and stuff, I'm just, I've got a dog, so they brought my dog for the evening, and I'm gonna stay with him tonight, and it'll put me there later, but I get the, it's not that long of a drive, and I'll be back here soon.
They warned you about the late meetings, but as new people come on, the meetings get shorter.
If you stop talking.
Don't worry, we all listen.
You knew that was coming, you know? Screw that up there as a song.
Tom, did you have anything that you wanted to report on?
Yeah.
They've been working pretty hard on permits, we have a huge enclose of permits, so they've been, they've been busy.
It's a good thing Marvin can get their permits done in a timely fashion.
Next up, we have Rose's report. Christina.
I don't have anything, so.
Nothing for Rose?
This meeting's gonna break.
Chop, chop!
All right, Deputy's report.
Question, comment, what's on it?
Uh, it's pretty cut, cut and dry, right?
Got anything exciting going on?
You didn't catch me doing anything.
Not yet.
Not yet, not yet.
Just got another microphone.
I was looking at, and I personally did not.
Are you seeing anything different now that summer's insane and where we're going or other, any obvious changes to traffic, to?
Cars. Well, as far as, about the new year, especially since I've worked.
Yay!
Yeah, one year. Since I've got here, me and Tom have both talked about it, that there's a drastic change in speed as far as coming down.
It's going down?
Yeah.
Good, okay. Just checking, it could go up, I wasn't sure. Okay.
Overall, it's getting harder and harder to find it, so that's a good thing.
Has it?
So keep looking at it at the same time, it's, that's about the only thing I've got as far, everything else is about the same across the board as far as speed-wise goes. It's slowed down, we, at least, you know, probably just me and him, we think drastically since we both started here.
Can we get bumper rails put on my roads to stay on our yard?
Oh, like the bowling alley, that'd be good.
All right, because I see it says 2,000 block of wax on Marvin, because he took out like.
The whole block?
Yeah, the whole block.
Just out of curiosity, there's a non-911 issue, but a concern and stuff. Are we publishing the phone number, or should they still call 911?
Always call 911.
Always call 911, regardless of.
Because we don't know, because we don't know if we don't, you don't get a call from anybody.
Well, so I'm asking, is there another number they can call the Union County Sheriff's Department?
Just call 911.
Okay.
Because then there's a, there's a record that we can see on the computer about it.
Okay.
Because I think we've had, I think we had an issue in one of the neighborhoods to where, I guess they called it here and said something about it instead of calling 911, so then we don't have any record of it.
Correct, okay.
So just call 911, so we have a record of it.
For those listening in, on all circumstances, thank you. Any other questions from council?
Do you wanna say anything about matching that out?
Come out.
It's on the third.
Third, 5:30.
5:30.
Should be a lot of fun, a lot of stuff in the sheriff's office, a lot of other different bureaus from the sheriff's office will be there.
SWAT.
SWAT, yes, a lot of SWAT stuff will be there. It's a good feeling, hopefully, we're looking at hot dogs, hamburgers, pizza.
Subs.
Are you taking donations for many?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you wanna make a donation, Joe?
Uh, sure. I'll call me on that, I'll do a donation. But HOAs, I know Fire, Thorn, our, our HOA always did something that kinda put it off of them, and they were able to fund that, but I'd encourage that, in fact, maybe someone, Christina, if you wanted to reach out, we send an email that encouraging.
Have you reached out to them?
No.
I mean, it'd be good just to send it to the president.
This is my first one, so we're gonna.
Yeah, I mean, just send it to the president, so, you know, it's an ask, and if they participate, great, it's no harm, no foul if they don't, it's just that, you know.
Yeah, we can get something out. So Mason said they're gonna do, they're gonna have a K9 unit out, hopefully, and they're gonna hopefully do a demonstration, so we need a volunteer for somebody to wear the suit, show the dog.
I was hoping for a dunking dude.
Joe, please, he can do the dog thing. I'd rather do a dunk to mayor.
I thought that'd be a good idea, and it's putting ice cold water, so.
That'll perfect.
Oh, you're gonna do that?
I'd do that.
I just found out about it.
Yes, put Joe in there.
Oh, there's plenty, in fact, I can think of one resident in particular, he's been emailing me. He can, he can throw all the balls he wants.
Wants to sink old Joey.
Okay, everybody, mark your calendar, August 3rd, 5:30. At the park.
All right.
At the park, it's at the park.
August 3rd, Tuesday, 5:30 to 8:00.
Yep, it's at the park.
Should be on.
8909 Newtown Road.
Perfect, all right.
Thank you very much, Mason. Next up, Planning Board Chair Report.
John Jones.
Is he around? John is here, so we're having a quick one him, I assume, nothing, Robert, you know, I mean.
Bob.
Bob. You're like, be I Bob or Robert?
Bob.
Okay, sorry, my bad, going back.
Yeah, I know.
Sorry.
Keep moving forward.
Planning Board, we just did the PR&amp;G Chair Report next up. Chairman Barris, she's not with us?
No. We had, we had a really good meeting this morning, I'm not John, but I'll just say we had a really good meeting this morning, I've got a bunch of stuff to go over when we get to the Marvin Day celebration, but we're also working on trying to zhuzh up the roundabout plantings.
A lot of zhuzhing up.
How do you spell that?
I don't know how to spell. Where are we with the well? We just signed a contract today, so. And they're gonna start digging it? She hadn't, she hadn't responded back yet. Okay, all right, so we don't wanna plant anything until the water's there, so, but we're, we don't wanna plant anything anyway, because it's July, so we're looking at October to kinda add to, to make it a little, yeah.
It should be done by then.
Okay, all right.
Well, that's gonna be kind of coinciding with Village Hall, because that goes with the whole irrigation system.
Yeah.
That plot and all that stuff, so.
Yeah.
We'll figure all that out as it comes together.
Your feet.
Very good, all right. Next up, we have consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So, public hearing, G1. Open the public hearing to consider the annexation of parcel number 06-210-007A requested by petition filed pursuant to NCGS 160A-31. Send a motion to open up the hearing?
So moved.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Anyone, or you do it all together, right? Public comments and everything? Combining them. Public comments and discuss and consider adoption of OR-2021-07-01 to extend the corporate limits of the Village of Marvin, North Carolina.
Sir, there's an image in the, I did the packet.
Yeah, I want to share on the screen the map and where.
Marvin's grown.
Apparently.
That's what I'm, that's the way I look at it.
Nope, nope. Need to share the screen key.
Is that the one with the pond in front?
Yes.
Corner pond.
I'm familiar with it, Marv.
Pond would be good. Our whites have to be that one.
You don't get it, it's the movie, um, Caddyshack. Caddyshack.
I love seeing Caddyshack.
Pulling the pond?
Okay, so it's this triangular lot here. This is Mr. Christian Cunningham, I'll look at his wife's name, Pollyanna Cunningham. It's triangle right here. He filed the petition in November last year for voluntary annexation. I should have most of the details in your packet. So you want to have any questions?
No.
No. The only question I had is, and this is a fair question, it's like, okay, so you have a voluntary annexation. I'd be curious to, you know, because we're saying all the things, what, what made them come in and stuff, what was the reason?
He is, he was looking for staff's help on getting a, getting the county's water line extended to his house.
Okay.
Uh, we have, uh, we have helped with that. Uh, we've referred him to a county program.
So it's potential infrastructure?
Yeah.
Help and stuff like that, so.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of things we can do, and we can go to bat, kind of like going back to the waste hauling and stuff. If you have a problem with your waste hauler, so if you're one person arguing up the shit, and now we start seeing problems, which we will with the waste, we have a, a, a village municipality that's gonna, that's contractual, as we talked about this, Andy. That has some teeth in it that is gonna affect that, so that's another reason that, you know, why you want to be a part of a town and stuff, and I think somebody requested, can they be a part of this service and stuff, so there's, there's a lot of benefits. I was just curious on some of these, so thank you for that, so, okay, that's all I had.
I feel like we should go to their house, like Club Tullisher's Clearinghouse or something. Is that them?
You know what, hey, but you know, they're doing it, and I'm glad people are doing it and seeing the value of being a town and stuff, so, in a town.
In our town.
In our town specifically, so. Alright, so do we need anything, or there's no, no one has any questions?
You can ask anybody on the WebEx wants to speak on this.
Yeah, does anyone want to make a public comment from the WebEx?
Stop sharing.
Okay, so, did they hear that?
Yes, they, they can hear it. You have two users there.
So we see two users on the WebEx. Any public comment on the annexation? Doesn't look like there is any. So that said, we need a motion. Okay, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So I'd like to make a motion, right, this is where we're going, right?
Yep.
To approve the annexation of parcel.
You can just adopt the ordinance.
Oh, so what do you want me to do? Alright, I'll make a motion to adopt OR-2021-07-01 to extend the corporate limits of the Village of Marvin, North Carolina.
Further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Alright, next up, uh.
We're gonna send the balloons?
Yeah.
Jamie, you got a big, like, sign, like?
I think that's, yeah. Welcoming gift.
Yeah, the welcome basket. Right on top of that rose.
It's not bad, it's not bad, a little welcome basket, welcome to Marvin, so.
Take a pic, take a picture, put it in the thing.
There you go, welcome basket.
Take a picture of what?
Put some popcorn, just knock on the door and say, we want to, we, we, you're welcomed into, you're now a resident of Marvin.
We're excited to have you.
Lord help us if we get a three-hundred home.
I'll go knock on the door. You wanna go knock?
Sure.
Be moral. Everybody got a basket ready?
I think you're wondering if you got a vaccination. Identify yourself.
Yeah, something to think about.
Maybe we'll take Mason.
Only if Joe gets to run the vaccine.
Alright, um, next up, we have number two, open public hearing to consider annexation of parcel number 06-207-005C, non-contiguous property owned by the Village of Marvin. I need a motion to open up the hearing.
So moved.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, Austin, there anything on this?
How is this not contiguous?
It's contiguous to our park, but it's not contiguous to our primary limits, because the entire park is a satellite of the Marvin, of the Village of Marvin.
That, uh, that was my, that was my question. I did not understand, because I was like, it is attached to the park, right?
Yeah, but the park's not attached to anything.
So, just a, just a reminder of what this is, uh, when the park, when Marvin Euford Park was annexed back in 2011, uh, we were unable to annex this parcel, uh, due to. There was, there was a limit on, on how big your satellite annexation could be at the time, and annexing the whole 27 acres would have put us over that limit. But now we've grown since then, and we can annex this parcel into Marvin. Uh, there are currently trails on it. We act as if it's in Marvin, it's just not officially in Marvin.
Alright.
It doesn't.
It's this wooded area right here, it's just got trails on it.
Put it in Marvin.
And this is property owned by?
Marvin. Own, yep.
Pretty easy. Yep, okay, what's that? Okay, um, looking out to those that are on Zoom World, any public comments?
Oh yeah, I gotta switch back, excuse me.
Seeing none, um, I will ask for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt OR-2021-07-02 to extend the corporate limits of the Village of Marvin, North Carolina.
Further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. A little quick shout out to Anthony Furman for clarifying that for me. He called me, and he does listen to these, so hello, Anthony out there, and thank you for reaching out and letting me know the details on that. Next up, uh, we have three, open, uh, number three, open the public hearing to consider zoning text changes related to minor miscellaneous amendments, including removing the large track, small track system of classification subdivisions. We need a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, I'll start with public comments first, before we do it. Any public comments out there? No one responding. We will move to discussion and consideration of this adoption. Any questions from any?
You'll need a motion to close.
Unless you want any staff explanations.
Oh yeah, we're gonna need some staff explanation.
Well, that's, so we're still, we're not closing yet.
It's still the public hearing, and we're not closing it.
So we're not closing the public hearing yet, okay, so.
Okay. I can take that. My name's Tom Wayne, I've been assisting the county's end administrator of the last several months, I'm Rowhead now, Hunter. This was one of Rowhead's projects, and I familiarized myself with it. Really, to summarize, this proposed ordinance only revises the names used to classify the three types of subdivisions, major, conservation, which is a subset of major, and minor, covering clarity and consistency within the subdivision chapter. There are no proposed changes to standards such as lot size or acreage of lots, and there are no proposed changes to the application and review procedures. I know Village Hall got some calls about this, that does it have anything to do with the Marvin Heritage District? It does not. So it is, um, really just to use terminology that is more commonplace, and it will help avoid confusion and inconsistency. At some point, please state preferably prior to your motion that the proposed ordinance is consistent with the Village of Marvin 2020 land use plan, and that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Now, as I was reading it, it was, it was a, a, a lot to take in and stuff like that, but at the very end, where you have reason listed there, it's pretty, um, so I would direct, uh, anyone who has any questions from the residents to council, reading that, kind of just simplifying the process and how we label things, and nothing major changing on this, so thank you for that.
Chaplain, you're good with all this?
I am.
And approved by the attorney. Alright, um, so if there's no other questions, I'll need a motion to close.
So moved.
Public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Alright, I'm gonna take a stab with this, unless somebody wants to talk about it.
Go ahead.
Okay, so. Should I say, should it, should I put the consistency statement in the motion?
Tack it on to the end.
Yeah, yeah, you make, make a motion to approve and fine.
Okay, alright, so I'm gonna make a, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance amending, the code of ordinance is to remove large track slash small track system of classifying subdivisions. Finding that the zoning amendment is reasonable in the public interest and consistent with the Village of Marvin's 2020 land use plan, as it updates the zoning code to make consistent references to subdivisions.
Well done.
Thanks.
Further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion passes. Thank you, thank you.
Because then I'll know the motion.
Next up, we have Village Hall, discussing permits, change orders, contingency update, and.
Hold on to your pants, here we go.
So we are 99.9% into getting our permit approval that was approved today.
Wait a minute. They took it back?
We physically do not have it.
Point one percent of it.
It's approved, we just don't have it?
See, we're in a corner.
Where are we getting it?
Hopefully tomorrow.
Oh wow.
Do you want me to drive to Union County? Joe and I'll stop in if we don't have it by Thursday.
Well, I have to physically go Thursday and hand deliver a check, so.
I think Tyler said he'd drive straight there as soon as it was ready.
We're very close, we should get it tomorrow. Um, part of the, part of tonight, the item that we added on was the agreement for the water and sewer, so that's one of the things, um, that we'll see subsequently. Wanted to just kind of mention the contingency and where we're at, because we're approximately 60% into our expenditure on contingency. This packet that I passed out is all of the change orders that you have not seen. Uh, you've seen one and two, and then three through nine is, is listed here. And it itemizes each change order and what it's for and the amount. The Union County Development Fees that you'll see in the agreement subsequent to new business number one is $29,000, and here it's listed at 24, however, they didn't put one part of the agreement in there, so it's actually $29,000. So we have approximately $80,000 left in contingency. I just wanted to make that known, because we do have a couple of things that will be coming up, and we'll actually, we'll probably go over that. If you flip the page, I've got all the anticipated.
Can I ask a quick question? What is that Union County Development Fee?
That is basically their access to water and sewer fee.
Capacity fees.
Yeah.
So for tapping in, the tap fees.
Tap fees.
Gotcha.
Yeah. I, I, we were shocked that it was gonna be that much.
Wow, yeah. Well, I know taffies are extraordinary, so.
It's a, it's a mix.
It's not very surprising to me. I just want, I just know, I was aware of what it was.
The next page are the anticipated COs. We have approximately $75,000 in overage for furniture, AV, security. This number may change slightly, because I've actually got another security quote in that's substantially cheaper than the first one, so hopefully that number goes down. I have not looked at it and find out detail yet, though. The amount of unsuitables that we had on this property is absolutely crazy, so the number that we had in sanitary, sanitary sewer unsuitable, could be more, it could be less, I, I don't know, I've just got $20,000 earmarked in there. I just wanted to give y'all a basis for where we're at with the contingency, it's not gonna be enough.
So we need to stop spending extra money?
We do have, I don't know exactly how much, but we do have the fund balance reserve for land acquisition that you guys have been honing on to for several years now. There's a couple hundred thousand dollars in there, so if we need to tap into that, it's there, we can use it, but I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't tell you that we're close to contingency amount.
Well, it doesn't surprise me with cost of, if you're building right now anyways, and, and, and change orders like most people have anyway, but it doesn't. I'm, I'm not surprised we're, we're there that quick, quite frankly, but hopefully we can keep it under.
The furniture update, I'm actually gonna table that to the next meeting. I thought I'd have an actual packet to show you guys. We've been working on a couple of things. We've actually got them all finalized as far as carpet, fixtures, um, the actual desks, chairs, all that stuff.
We hope you like it, our choices.
It's, it's really nice.
And they're finalizing all the, the, the minor details right now, and I'll have an update for you guys on a later date on that. Other than that, I have no real updates, and we've been working on a lot of things, but that's.
So the 99.9%, at the point one, can, can they still start tomorrow over there? They can't.
Well, I mean, not tomorrow morning.
Alright, well.
They have to have the.
I'll be over that way, Thursday, I think, so.
We sent, so we probably sent 20 or 30 emails today about this, and so, uh, they have to have the permit number before they can start, and we're waiting on the county to get back to us on that.
And they know the sense of urgency, they're not able to.
I just checked my email.
Alright, if no questions, we'll move on. Alright, moving on to unfinished business, we have discussion 2022 Marvin Day Celebration.
Okay, so, we had a really good meeting this morning. Jamie was there, um, at the Park Second Greenway Board. So we're, you know, we're, we're just moving forward, we're trying to finalize, not finalize, we're trying to pinpoint, nail down just some more of the, the details. I did talk to Fire Thorn, they're very interested in being, um, a part of it. Um, they're very open and willing to open up the doors, have people come in, check out tennis, check out golf, go to the pool, sample some food, talk to, you know, their membership, so they're definitely, um, they want to be involved. I'm gonna circle back around with it, they've already got the date. Um, I'm gonna circle back around with the GM in September, and try to just kind of nail down some more things there. I've reached out to the Raptor Center, I'm waiting on them to get back to me. Um, Derek has talked to the elementary school. They are willing to open up the gym on the Saturday to do the blood drive, and to allow people to park at the elementary school in order to do the whatever trail run.
Marvin Elementary.
Marvin Elementary, trail run, whatever they're planning on doing. Um, so that's good. John Barisic is gonna call the high school to talk to them about using the field for kind of the end, the evening end event for the day. What else? We're talking about maybe doing like a car show as part of that.
You know anybody that has a car?
You have a fancy car.
I get it down off the rack, I'm afraid to bring it down. It doesn't have brakes.
It doesn't have brakes?
Not really.
I should.
So.
It's not driving.
So, can you reach out to John Jones and talk to him about?
I know he'd love that.
I know, so can you, can you head that up for us?
Yes, yes, and thinking more, and thinking more, um, not just.
Old cars.
Old cars, but new cars.
Cool car.
Oh, we, we've been doing it just FYI, the, the, um, in fact, he wanted me to take it over. He was the head of the band of the high school, and every year, it got bigger and bigger. Last year, they couldn't do it because of COVID. He was asking me to take over the realm, and it's all kind of cars, crazy, modified stuff to old stuff, the stuff that, we've done it at, for years, at, right in front of the high school, so I can't imagine. But that's been tied to a fundraiser for band, which is their only real fundraiser annually, so if, you know, we don't go into a thing and just have, we do registration on that.
If you follow up with John, because I can talk to John too, but I also a member of a couple of car clubs, and I have, uh, the Ferrari car, car club would love to come out here and bring, it's actually all Italian cars. You might remember, uh, they do it at 131 Main.
Yep, yeah.
So.
Love that show.
Yeah, so, uh, we can pull that, because the timing would be good on this.
And the date, if we have a personal date?
It's May 21 of '22.
May 21 of '22.
Cool.
So I'm sure, they're older, they're classic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sure, he's probably.
Austin, did you already send an invite out for that?
For what?
For May to all of us.
I have not, but I can.
Do you mind?
I don't mind.
I have first annual Marvin Day.
I think I did that.
Okay.
I know I have it in, so that's good.
Really, the objective is to have, starting in the morning, with doing the, the run, or whatever it may, may be, and then, and just throughout the day, there's gonna be a thing that, oh, well, I'd like to do this, this, and this, but I can do the run, I can do the blood drive, I'm gonna do the, the car show, but it's gonna spread out throughout the day, different locations. And so you just kind of fill the whole day up, and the culmination's gonna be. to be the park.
No, the high school.
The high school.
Concert at the high school is what we're, is what we're asking for. That's why we're doing all this early.
Snoop Dogg, I just watched. I just watched Old School. Snoop Dogg's coming?
Is two thousand and three?
I literally not even with him right now.
Thing like getting the stones, not the rolling stone. There's someone who is there. They give blood and then do the race.
Yeah, yeah, make sure we got these in the right order.
Christina, I'm going to put it on our list to talk to off-duty Union County Department of Security.
I'm excited. And just note too, that we are going to need a lot of volunteers, but I think we can have someone coordinate that, because we're going to have someone at the visiting Village Hall, everything that's going on, whether it's at the park or whatever, but just having a lot of volunteers that are just, I'd rather have too many volunteers and have everyone know what they're going, what they're doing, have people there, so.
And we're going to, we're going to do sponsorships so that people can sponsor, you know, hopefully companies will come in, do some donations, we'll have sponsorship level.
So, they're doing a run or not?
We're working on something. I don't know if it's going to be a five K, if it's going to be a fun trail run.
Because in conjunction with that, a lot of times they do bike with that, like the same trail where people run, people can ride bikes and stuff like that, where it's more of a casual thing.
Yeah, so if it's like a fun run, then we'll probably, you know, say if you want to ride a bike, you know, whatever, then yeah, that's fine. If it's like a five K, we probably won't, but we're, again, lots of details to be worked out, but we're, I think we're making a lot of really good progress.
Girls on the Run does a nice, my wife was involved with that, they do a nice program and probably to tap into some of their interests on if we were going to do a run or something like that in sponsorship.
Where do you think the car show would be?
The high school in the parking lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's where it's always.
And like, and like, kind of like late morning, early afternoon, and then get them gone before the concert.
Yeah, that'll happen.
You mentioned a parade at one point, is that?
Well, that kind of, I think that got backburnered because where would we do it? The only place that we would, could do it is like maybe through here, and where are people going to, where are people going to be? Where can people park? Where are they going to sit and do? So, it's kind of been backburner, it's more of a festival type thing. I'd love to do some type of parade of something.
And as we grow this, we're planning on it, you know, first step at it, we can always add to it. I would much rather do the first year smaller, but like well-executed, so that people are like, man, that was awesome.
And I like your idea of like timing it, where the run is first thing in the morning, it's in May, so it shouldn't be too hot, but then you go, car shows at this time, you don't want car shows at law drive.
We're talking about the equestrians.
We've got some places where they can go, they can go see the equestrian. We have, we'll have the whole law enforcement thing, we'll have Village Hall open. I would like to see possibly, I don't know if we're talking about this, but something planned with like Gene Stowe, just to have some information that says, okay, here are the, what you don't, what you maybe don't know about Marvin, history of Marvin, flyers or whatever, or maybe we have his thing showing on a loop or something like that.
Yep.
So.
That's on the list, I've got that.
I'm assuming Marsh has some, Marsh is.
Marsh is going to do, Marsh is going to do garden tours at people's houses, they're also going to do a trail walk and like nature walk at the park, show where the community gardens are, that's where we're thinking about having like the Raptor Center come and do some demonstrations there, maybe we'll have the snake guy come, like.
So, how are you reaching out, what's your plan for volunteers? You mentioned you want to meet a lot of volunteers.
Well, I think, I think what, designate someone as kind of like the captain of the volunteers, and then we'll put it out via the thing, said if you'd like to volunteer for, for this event, please let us know, and then what we can do is just come up with, okay, which one would you like to do? We'll bring them all into Village Hall, which one would you like to do? I'd like to do that one, are you, can you do from two o'clock to four o'clock? They just have kind of a captain of the volunteers, they know where they're supposed to be, we're going to give them a T-shirt that says volunteer Marvin Day Celebration Festival, whatever, we're going to, we set them, come up with a solidify, solidify the name for Marvin Day.
Okay.
With Marv.
And.
The shoe-heeled splitter.
Shoe-heeled splitter.
The heel splitter, not the shoe heel, just the heel splitter, I always say it wrong. What?
No, it's, I'm just thinking, where were you established and how many years that is? So, our first Marvin Day is almost thirty years, it's twenty-eight years or so, so.
And then, and as we move this forward, because I know several, a couple people are talking about the equestrian stuff, I mean, if you have some type of exhibition rodeo, I don't want to say a full-fledged rodeo, but just something like that that says, okay, at three o'clock, they're going to be doing roping or something, you know, it's just.
Barrel racing.
Barrel racing, yeah, whatever.
The one, that one farm cross from the chimneys there, they do trick riding.
Okay.
So, that may be something that could go in that, that's, they always used to, and they changed hands, but it's the same horses, they're the, they're kind of a hybrid draft horse and regular horse to be a little sturdier, and they get in there and they pyramid and do all that stuff. I don't know if they're still doing it, but I know Sandy used to do it, that was her thing.
Okay.
I don't know if any of you are old enough to remember this, but I remember growing up, there were firefighting, I know I'm going to get yelled at for the, like, fire hall, but there was a.
It's a fire station.
Fire station departments would challenge each other to a barrel, where the barrel was a keg, was in the center of a line, and there were two departments fighting each other, and with the hoses going to see, it's almost like a tug-of-war game, shooting at the, how accurate they are and stuff like, it's, it's fun to see and fun to watch and that type of thing, I knew, that growing up was kind of fun, like we bring Weddington or whatever, some of the different departments.
You got little kids, something that just, that just got like, oh my God, and you, that they're excited.
And that could be done in Eford Park, I would think, because you get it off the road, we used to do it in the downtown on the street, but this could be done in a place at Eford Park where you have two fire engines on both sides and stuff, and firefighters competing against each other just to kind of show their skills, that type of stuff, so, just a thought.
Anyway, just a thought, exhibitions by the motor pool, motorcycle motor pool, where they, you know, they go in and out of the cones and stuff like that, because Union County doesn't have a motor pool, does it?
They have two guys, I think, that ride motorcycles, not, but they have three parades and stuff.
I'm thinking where the car show would be, they could set up at one end of the, you know, where the parking lot would be, they could set up some sort of a demonstration if they would be open to that. Okay.
Should we call the off-duty people on that one too?
I'll have to get back to you.
There it is, I knew I'd eventually get it.
I have to get back to you.
And I might could see, maybe just, you know, kind of thinking too, that that time of year, it's nice out, maybe I could talk to like the Golden Knights, and they could do a, you know, bring the flag in or something.
Ooh, yeah, that'd be cool.
Yeah.
I'd go tandem with them.
Look at one of those eyes.
I would.
Well, I've jumped out of an airplane, not with them, but I've jumped out of a perfectly good airplane, so I'd do it again.
Knock yourself out. They're going to get you a pink helmet this week.
Yeah, I already have a pink helmet, it's mine, it's in the house.
You got to get a strap for it. I will, I will check with them to see if I can, how to jump with them and have some relations with them, so maybe it could be very cool.
We may need a permit.
Well, the good thing is, is they could.
But it's in Marvin, we'll be able to just write ourselves a permit, it'll be fine.
We did the digging out there, didn't we?
No, everybody should have taken theirs, I can see if there's one in the closet, might have been a marriage, he didn't take yours.
Yeah. We had a helicopter land in the field right kind of our house one time, picked up some people and left. So, word of God, I was like, why does it sound like there's a helicopter in my backyard?
It just hit me, I went and I landed, Firethorn on the golf course.
It was the same.
For a birthday party for a three-year-old.
Oh, that's when it wasn't a three-year-old, but.
I'm excited about it.
Yeah, we've got a lot of work to do, but it's coming, it's coming together really well. We're going to have a, we're going to have a work session in two weeks to kind of nail down some more stuff, so we'll keep you updated, but it's coming together well.
Awesome, good, well, I'm excited. Thanks to both of you.
Yep.
Thanks for that. Alright, any other questions? Moving on, discussion of gates and private roads. Chaplin?
That's me. Well, the name was, you know, public roads, people want gates, but public roads need to have public access, and there are some public streets that people want to look into gated and want another process. First of all, the process to close a street isn't all that easy because they're publicly dedicated, so there are numerous steps. First, you must pass a resolution of intent, and we intend to look at this, it's not a decision of whether you're going to do it, it's just, we intend to close it, move forward.
But we can't close it because it's, well, some we can because they would be Marvin streets, but some we can't, right?
These are your streets, these are Marvin streets that they're asking about, and that's our limitation.
Some of ours.
Some of them are DOTs, I think the process would be the same.
Yes, but DOT is going to, you have to do, you have to get DOT's consent as well.
You have to petition a DOT.
Yes.
That's, that's what I'm asking, because like my neighborhood, they want to know how we can, how we can put a gate up, well, they're still DOT roads.
Well, let me get to some of the problems too with this. If it was ours, it could be the notice of intent, resolution of intent, publication for four weeks, then you have to notify every single property owner that abuts certified or registered now, then you have to hold a public hearing and find that it's in the public interest and no one will be denied access. Here's the problem, when you get into closing what have been public streets, usually when you have a developer, they have the street, but if it's a private street, they will dedicate all the common space to the HOA, the grounds and the streets, HOA will control and it goes through there. When the road is dedicated, it becomes the public, it's a public street. When there's a street closure by statute, up to the center line of a street goes to the adjacent property owners unless every single person that abuts it agrees otherwise. Every single one, each person must assent to dedicate it to a third party. So, the street closure process is designed to, when there's a small street or an abandoned street, and there's two or three property owners, or one person owns most of it, there's not a great process for when it becomes a public street and then it flips back and you want to privatize it, it just, it's hard, at least from a municipal standpoint. I did not realize this was on DOT streets, but I think it's going to have to be the same problem with the same issue.
Just one extra step is that you'd have to convince DOT.
Convince DOT, but the problem is making sure no one is denied access and then getting every person, I can't even imagine the logistical nightmare of looking through the deeds of a street that goes all the way back to the neighborhood of having twenty-five, thirty houses on each side, you're going to have a holdout. So, so.
So, if you have one holdout that's like, I absolutely do not want this to happen.
Or you have a foreclosure, or you have it put into a trust.
But, but if you have one person that's like, absolutely not, I'm not going to do it, then they can't do it.
Not by a statute, because you, the statute is very precise, and it says, each adjoining owner must assent to dedicate into another property, you just have that filed.
Okay, and, and, okay, how did Providence Downs do it then? Because I know there were people in that neighborhood that were like, absolutely not.
Right, so.
Two questions.
When Firethorn wanted to do it, and we went back and forth, and there was, I mean, everybody, everybody's throats, and finally I asked my attorney, the HOA attorney, and he goes, this is simple, he goes, if the developers would have put the paperwork into the county that says this is going to be a private.
Yeah, that's fine.
Private neighborhood with private roads, with private whatever, you can gate whatever. But they didn't, they put it in as a public neighborhood and tried to go back and do it, you have to have one hundred percent of everyone that says, okay, I will allow that to happen. You can't get a hundred percent of the people in Marvin to agree that today is Tuesday.
No, I agree.
That's never going to happen, so once you, once you issue the plat to the county.
Dedication, but to her point.
But how did Providence Downs do it? Because I know, and I know.
Because they went, I guarantee you, they went in day one and said, when they put the paperwork in with the county, they said this is going to be a private.
That's not, no, it's not the case, that's not the case.
Because they just gated it, like.
Well, they went to Union County, they came to us for one reason, because there were a handful of homes in that neighborhood, and not all of them agreed, and we basically were, at the advice of our attorney back then, was, we're wiping our hands clean, we're not, we're not stepping in their way to allow them or not, it's going to be a total county decision, and somehow they skimmed that cap for them, because they closed those roads off and they were never dedicated to be a private.
Yeah, they were, they were public roads way back, I mean, that.
And they never got a hundred percent.
They know, they skimmed that cap a different way.
In what neighborhood are you talking about?
But it happened though, that's what I'm saying, to save you some time, we need to learn how that happened in Union County.
I know how it happened. They said, we're closing the road, we're making it private.
I don't think that's the case, because you can't just do that, the county gets involved from the EMS to everyone, that was one of the issues, that we could close it on the North Carolina side, but they wouldn't let us close it on the South Carolina side.
Did they take over their streets and privatize the streets in that neighborhood so that they could do that, no longer public street?
Yep.
I've read the minutes from when that happened.
They just got the majority of the HOA is what they.
And they dedicated it to the HOA.
Yeah, it's probably.
I don't know how they did it, and I don't know if they did it properly, but it became, at one point, the village council voted that they were in the opinion that those streets are now privatized and are now Providence Downs, private streets. So, we essentially took our hand, took our hands out of it for the few streets that we did have at the time or were in Marvin order.
But there were a few, there were a few homes in there that they were coming to us, and within those few homes, maybe there was twelve, thirteen, a few, or maybe there was twenty, I can't remember, but a few of them refused to actually sign their agreement and stuff, so I, you know, it's like.
I'm just asking, because that's like, because I, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying.
My guess is what they did, they just said, there, we're closing it for private, and we're going to deed it to the HOA, and nobody cared.
And the HOA can deal with repercussions.
I guess I'd rather not guess.
But what if you're an adjoining property owner and all of a sudden you get to sell your property, then somebody really studies this stuff, because you don't have legal access.
Yeah.
Because they try, I don't know, I don't recall the thing, but did they not try to do something like that with, with Marvin?
Well, here's what happened back then. If I go back, yeah, no, what happened was that the council got smart to Marvin Creek. If you go back and remember, they wanted to close those gates, and what council did, Marvin Council went and they purchased the land under the gates. So, they did not, I'd say took it from DOT, and they did not allow, that's how they got them from closing that gate, which created an uproar. Before my time, it was certain council members that chose to do that, and in fact, if you go back and why I think DOT's been mad at us is because they said, oh, if you want to get public funds for POW bill, you have to take over roads. So, what did that council do? That council took over roundabouts.
Caldasax.
Caldasax, I mean, I'm sorry, not roundabouts, Caldasax. So, they, and DOT got upset because they go, you can't do that, that's not even try, I mean, they were all upset, but it was, they were gaming the system, that's the same thing they did at Marvin Creek, previous council before my time, so that was years ago, and that is still owned by, the Village of Marvin is right under where the gates were supposed to be. So, they built that building, they built the gates, but the gates were never allowed to be closed before that.
It was about twelve, twelve years ago.
And I would take it back to the days of Anthony, probably has more information, if he's listening, I'm sure I'll get a call from him, because he usually listens to these things, and he'll clarify, and I'll correct myself. He's calling now, so.
Aside, aside from the liability issues that Chaplin seems to think we potentially will run into, there was also the caveat that we could not find an answer to, we don't understand what DOT would do about previously funded POW bill dollars put in the road, so that's, that's another angle that we have to research as well.
But that would be like a Marvin neighborhood.
Yes.
Yeah, because it would be one that you got funding, you approved it.
But now we're going to privatize it.
Yeah, and you didn't take them over that long ago.
Yeah.
Took them over, you got state funds, you approved it and then you give it back to the private. That, that could irritate. There are also, you're looking at areas where you're expanding some of your services and your use of these roads. You can still get access, but it gets, I mean, you get rid of getting the solid waste business.
I mean, I, I don't want to get into fighting with neighborhoods and communities, but if a community like yours or some other small neighborhood wants to do it, then I don't think it should be on us to find the legal access and ways to do it. Because I think we've come to the conclusion, most of these roads, when I bought my house, I knew it was gonna be a private road. That's what was on the deed. I'm not asking to change. It'd be nice to be in the gated and all of a sudden the gates up, but some people don't want that. If you want a gated community, you should buy it.
But it doesn't, but it doesn't matter. Ninety-nine people of a hundred.
I know.
Could want it in a certain neighborhood.
In the one that doesn't.
The one that doesn't, until they have, until they sell and they get someone else, it's a new issue.
But somehow.
And it's just that pretty simple.
Somehow Providence figured out a way through the HOA. They got the majority of the HOA to approve it and they may have deed. That's where, the answer is with them and the county because we had nothing to do with it.
I, I don't believe that we should have, it's pretty cut and dry from, from my standpoint because I've gone through it.
You, it's interesting. You told your attorney and you were pretty much saying what I said.
Well, well, everything is the process. If it remained in the HOA, which a lot of it did.
So I think the, to summarize it, we can't confirm or deny that Providence Downs did it right or, or not right, legal or illegal.
That's fair.
So, okay, so the question is, if somebody wants to try and they are non-Marvin roads, they're DOT. If my neighborhood wants to try to put a gate up, will Marvin allow a gate?
Per the ordinance how it states now.
I know. The answer's no. I'm not, that's, that's what I'm asking. Will we allow a gate?
Could we entertain that since we haven't taken over, if we haven't taken over a road yet, I think is what she's asking.
If we haven't taken it over and it remains private, I think.
No, it's, it's public.
I don't think you can gate a public road or allow it to be gated. I don't think DOT will allow.
No, no, but if we, if we, if my neighborhood comes and goes to DOT and says, we want to own our roads. My neighborhood wants to own our roads. We're gonna take it over. We're gonna maintain it. We just want you to say, okay, we'll give it to us. And then we want to put a gate up. Right now, Marvin does not allow gates. If the state says, sure, go ahead. You guys do whatever you want to do.
And the county.
And the county, will Marvin allow gates? I'm not asking what our ordinance says. I'm asking council, would we allow gates?
Would we entertain that?
That's what I'm asking.
I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't because then we would not have to worry. The HOA would take over the roads, not Marvin. So why would, if that is a community under an HOA that wants to own their roads and put up a gate, why would we, why would we get in the way of that?
I, I am not disagreeing with you at all. It's like, it, I, I think it's almost, quite frankly, if you want to get behind a gate, talk to Mason. It's a little hanging fruit. You go into, a neighborhood doesn't have a gate, but if I want to get in a place that has a gate and I'm a crook, I'm gonna figure out a way to get in. So it's a false sense of security.
Yeah.
You're just driving behind the first driver.
It's a false sense of security in so many ways.
But that, but that's also not necessarily a reason a neighborhood would want gates.
Yeah. But here's, here's the other question to your point. If, if we're in a community that we actually have the roads, we own the roads, same scenario.
Yeah.
That, and HOA says, we want to put up gates. We want to take control of the roads. We'll take it from Marvin or take it from the DOT.
What about the new development that hasn't come yet? I mean, are we gonna allow that? That's.
Well, it depends on if they want to privatize it or not. So keep going, keep going.
No, so I'm saying that if in the same scenario, you, where we've owning the roads in a community and the community, the HOA says, we don't want Marvin to maintain our roads. We'll take it because we want to put up a gate.
Because I think we have more liability there because they're Marvin-owned roads. And then at that point, we would be involved and we would have to make sure that 100% of the people wanted it done before we could do it. I feel like, and I don't know if I'm right or not, but I feel like if it's DOT, Marvin can say, hey, we'll allow a gate on a private road.
Yeah.
And then, and then you guys figure it out.
Yeah, it'd probably be easier. It'd probably be easier.
I'm asking that question.
Yeah, I think you probably could then if you, make sure you've got all the lockbox scenarios with access because of the emergency.
I mean, I, I mean. Didn't we essentially do that with Rising Road?
Yes. But, but it, but it's smaller.
This right here? Yeah, but I mean, it's still, it's still gated community and it's a private road and they gated it. So is that not essentially what we've already done?
And it was, and it was a public road because that was happening four years ago.
Right.
Because it was a public road. They had to abandon it and then do something. And then they took it, and then they took it over.
Right.
Yeah, so we've already set precedent and done it. So why wouldn't we do it moving forward, I guess is the question, since we've already done it.
That's my question. But Chaplin, do you feel, obviously I feel like if it's a Marvin-owned road, then that's virtually gonna be impossible unless 100% of the neighborhood wants to do it. And that's gonna be.
Doing it right, correct.
And, and I think that if the HOA wants to do it and they want to pursue it, then they will be in charge of paying for the certified letter, all that stuff.
Oh, coming and confirming ownership of, you know.
That, that will not.
Husband, wife, is it trust, with proper.
That will not be on the burden of the village.
Somehow, think about if there's some sort of national disaster where the roads just, I mean, I'm just talking, but if the roads fail and, and they don't have the money, that HOA doesn't have the money to do it and they're stuck, what do they do?
Not our problem, not our roads.
Well, that's just it.
Yeah.
Hold on, but let me, let me go back to.
They would have to sell their roads and remove their gate in that scenario.
Yeah, but then DOT will never take them over and they won't be able to stop.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, so if they're Marvin-owned roads and they, and the neighborhood wants to put up a gate, then they would have to get 100% of the people on board before Marvin would say yes to a gate.
I believe so because I don't think you can have a public.
Okay.
Street gated, which, public street is public access. You're denying public access.
Okay, so if a neighborhood is DOT streets and they want to put up a gate, we'll say, you can put up a gate on a private road. You as the HOA need to go and figure out how.
How to get it.
You gotta get it abandoned. You gotta.
And, and the village has no liability on that because it's not villages, it's not villages' road. And all we're saying is you can put up a gate on a private road. So if you can figure out how to make it private, we'll allow the gate.
But I would want some language from the village protecting us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I'm asking the question.
You also want to do is talk to your planners because they have this thing called connectivity that they want. And I know you'll think of cut-through traffic, but when it's within a community, if you have all these dead end pockets, it can create a lot of problems.
Well, like a one, one in, one out neighborhood.
That's usually not it.
And we'd have to change our ordinance too.
You would have to change your ordinance.
But so my question is to the council, would we entertain gates if the HOA can figure out how to do it?
I would.
I mean, I would too, if they can figure out how to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, I, listen, I don't care for my neighborhood. I'm just saying, I'm with Bob. I'm like, if we can get some stuff off the books.
I'm, I'm gonna say yes because they're not gonna be able to do it.
I don't disagree with that.
That's because I have a reason to say yes. So I'm gonna figure it out. And then if you lost, it's everywhere.
If you do it wrong and then people don't have legal access.
But that's not on us.
You're, you're right. We would.
Yeah, we, we're out of it. We're out of it.
I just want to make sure there's no liability on the village.
Well, that's the language that would have to happen.
It would have to have everybody sign off.
I think that's what happened and that's what I'm saying is there was a process that they did that somehow got it done. Right, wrong, it's different, doesn't matter. They got it done through attorneys and whoever they knew maybe at the time and the county people. Because that, that's who approved. We basically wiped our hands clean of it. Even though there were some homes of Marvin in there, they, that's the direction they were going.
They pulled something because they even got turn lanes put up on the main roads.
So just single interest neighborhood in conjunction with.
No.
So I don't know who they.
So just to summarize, just to summarize the consensus here, the board and the legal council agree that if it's a Marvin road, it's pretty much a no-go for gates, correct?
If it's, oh, if it's taken over from the DOT officially taking over.
If it's an existing Marvin road.
It's, it's, well, or it's gotta be 100% agreement.
Okay, and then the second.
No, because then we're still gonna run into the pow bill issue of the state.
Well, don't get confused with what she's asking. She's asking.
I know. He, he wasn't.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So I'll ask it again. Is there a consensus with legal council and the board that if it's a Marvin road currently, it is pretty much a no, a hard no for gates?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second question is if it is a NC DOT road, the board is in agreement that if the HOA can convince DOT to relinquish the rights to the road, they will consider an amendment to the ordinance to allow gates?
Yes.
Wait, say it again?
If it is, if it is currently a DOT road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the HOA can convince DOT to relinquish the rights to the road, that you all will consider an amendment to the ordinance to allow gates?
Yes.
Upon a, some sort of agreement.
Yes.
That we would.
Yeah, and I think DOT can abandon. I think they have a different process.
They do. Because that's what they did with Rising Road over there.
Yeah, they can abandon their interests and they can even sell it. They can do all kind of creative things.
So at this point, if we have any questions, the message to the HOA would be, talk to DOT. If you can get them to do it, then we will entertain some type of texting them on our end.
It's gonna be a process. It's not gonna be a short process, but we're gonna be open to it.
Yeah.
I think that's where we're at.
So now there's a staffer.
I think that's about as fair as we can be.
I think so too. I just wanted to make sure there was a liability on the village. If like there was one holdout and the HOA was like, oh, we're gonna just jam it down their throats and do it anyway. I just wanted to make sure that there's no liability on the village.
That's if you do the shortcut method.
Yeah, okay, all right.
All right, moving on, new business G. Discussion of dates for Fall Town Hall meeting.
It's your favorite time of year, Jamie. Hey, when you guys want to do this, I was thinking about it. I was like, ooh, we don't have a fall, fall date on the calendar.
When did you do it last year?
You did it, so you did it September fifteenth last year.
When do we do it then?
I'd say October. Yeah, I was gonna say October, yeah.
Give us a little more time.
What night?
Didn't we have, when you've been doing it on Thursdays?
No, you did it, you did it Wednesday the first time and then Tuesday the second.
Okay.
I'll throw out the nineteen.
Tuesday the fir, Tuesday the first and Wednesday was.
I am not busy on the nineteenth.
We can't do the nineteenth because it's planning board.
Yeah, planning board.
Because we had in conjunction with the.
Twenty-sixth.
Uh, yes.
That's why I thought we did it.
Hearing or whatever, right?
But I'm looking at Wednesday the sixth.
You did, you did it Tuesday last year and you did Wednesday this year.
Okay.
Was it Wednesday?
I'm holding.
Okay.
Wednesday the twentieth?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm following that.
Wednesday a good day?
You're not hitting any meetings, but this is something important to consider, the venue. Because we've not made efforts to book Forest Hill again because we had such low attendance the last one. Um, if you were going to do it at the Fellowship Hall of the Church, you can't do a Wednesday because they have church events. If you're gonna do it Forest Hill, you can, but we just don't need to know what.
Let's do Monday the night, the eighteenth.
You backed up on Monday Night Football.
Oh, Jesus God. How about Thursday the twenty-first?
That's what I was thinking. Do it on Thursday.
And I've confirmed that Thursdays are the best day for the church. If you want to do it at the church.
Do it Thursday then.
You're not gonna be here.
So we don't have, we don't have the technology to do the Zoom over there.
I've got my class on.
Okay, wait a minute. We don't have the technology to do the Zoom over there.
You do, uh, but Christina just pointed out that something's on my calendar.
Austin won't be here that week.
Well, it didn't really matter. We couldn't get it to work at the church.
I was just gonna say, we gotta be more fluid.
It didn't work at the church, right?
That was, that was really.
Embarrassing.
On our face.
Well, no, I mean, we, we put it out there. I mean, it's, you know what? It tells me the.
No, we couldn't get the video, we couldn't get the webex.
That part, that has to be real.
We, we've connected to a webex over there.
We've had such low attendance. Is there a way we could do a traditional town hall at Efron Park?
We can call for a meeting there, yeah, yeah. We can call for a meeting there. We won't have any service to, to zoom it out to the world. All the more reason to attend.
All the more reason to.
And, and, and bring him in by doing hot dogs and burgers.
I mean, how many people did we have remote on the last meeting?
It wasn't that many.
You had about, you had about fifteen.
In fact, if you recall, well, it was, that was interesting because I remember Austin, you and I were talking. What was going on that happened? Was, was there some sort of weather event?
So that was, it was such a weird time. It was the gas shortage, the time.
Oh, that's what it was.
That's right, because there were lines to the Harris' dealers getting gas.
And, and I thought, nobody's gonna be driving to the town hall because it sounded like, you know.
Maybe that's, maybe that.
That, that was the issue.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth of October. Let's see.
There's nothing in our calendar.
Yeah.
I like how she's checking mine before I am.
Fourteenth sounds good.
Yeah, fourteenth is fun.
That's Thursday Night Football.
Is there a date that doesn't happen?
Do people still watch football?
Yeah, I don't actually.
Not me.
I just.
My boy Bobby.
There's not a night football.
There are a lot of people that still watch.
All right, fourteenth. Do you want to do on the fourteenth?
I, I'm good with that.
Okay, and what, what venue do you want?
Efron.
Well, I, let's do it at the park. I like the idea of saying.
Go back to the park.
Yeah.
It'll still be light later because it's, hasn't been daylight savings time. It might be a little chilly. You might have to wear a little jacket.
We can have space to get in or something. That's not a big deal.
People can, I mean, that's a short drive. They can, they can come in and it's casual and we've got, got the barn set up to get the seed for bark for those who.
Six thirty?
Yeah.
Six thirty.
And we're more approachable at the park because we're all like right there.
A block off the barn from Mayor.
Six or six thirty?
Six.
Six?
For you guys.
Six thirty.
Six.
Six, huh, six, whatever.
I mean, I.
I mean, we changed, we changed our meetings to six. We're not doing town hall at six. What?
I just, I just want to give a little more opportunity for people to get home from work as more and more people go to work.
Six thirty.
Okay, so what, ten, fourteen?
Six thirty?
Six thirty.
Yeah, on the fourteenth.
But it's not like they're having a regular council meeting and it takes forever. It's, it's, it's a town hall. You know, it's like.
Is there any other details you guys want for this? Are we doing any other sorts of preparation? Because if we're.
No, the, the agenda item was discussion of dates.
Is this on the fourteenth?
Yeah.
Let's help us.
We're not gonna, I, I don't think we do with Zoom.
No.
We couldn't out there anyway.
As long as we have a PA system and we have an agenda that's put up on a board that everyone can see, I think we're, I think.
And we'll have paper agendas.
Um.
Yeah.
We'll have time for.
Can I bring, yeah, I, can I ask a question? Because this is going to be on the cusp of election. Can we allow candidates just?
No.
Because it's Marvin.
It is pretty close to election though.
It is.
But no.
I don't necessarily want to cloud our town hall meeting with political.
I mean, what I'm saying is you could introduce the candidates is all I'm saying.
I think we're gonna, we're doing that on the website.
Okay.
I think that's enough.
I'm waiting, people's turn in.
I, I think that, like specifically, it says like in our public comments that you can't like, be, get like political and come in and run for, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
So I would say, I wouldn't allow that at the, at the town hall. I wouldn't say anything.
You could encourage people to vote.
You could encourage them to vote.
Sure, we can remind people that election day is on the second.
Yeah, I mean, we don't need to talk about the agenda. I just, I was just talking.
Okay.
Yeah.
The town hall at Efron Park, correct?
Yeah.
So that means on next month's agenda. Actually, can we put that on the work session to talk about an agenda?
Food truck.
I like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Who gets the guy that pulls up in the BMW and hops out and grabs some food?
Just for that. We know you, we were watching you.
We don't know who you are, but.
And I think even for that, that's a great idea. I think you have two food trucks.
Yeah.
You can't guarantee them anything, so you know what? We're having her at this event.
Well, usually food trucks require a certain minimum, but they usually hit it. But if we have two trucks there, then that may be harder to hit that minimum.
Well, then just, yeah, just do a, one that has a good variety of food.
The next work session.
Okay.
Good, okay. I like it. All right, moving on. Next, uh, new business is at, uh, discussing center entering into standard water and sewer services extension agreement with Union County Water and Sewer District for Village Hall 100006, Marvin. I assume that's you, Christina?
Yeah, he's going to pass it around. It's basically a requirement for Village Hall access, $30,000 approximately for development fees. Again, that's.
Take one, pass it around.
Contingency.
We've already seen this number?
Yeah, it's in there.
Or is it extra number?
The third, it's an extra number.
Hand back the extra.
So now we're, so we got the 25 plus this.
29.
It was in here.
It's 29.
That's what I just asked.
If y'all have already seen it in the contingency.
That's just.
Sorry.
We thought it was another thing. Okay, so this is that.
Easy.
Tap fee, basically.
Mr. Tapper.
Okay, got it.
Hey, do you need us to approve this? All right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the standard water and sewer services extension agreement with Union County and the village of Marvin.
Is there any negotiating? Is the only company I'll make, there's no negotiation.
Have you already?
I've reviewed it.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's their capacity fee and they reserve their capacity for up to five years. If you don't build within five years, you can lose that capacity, but you should only need it for about five months. But it's for their, I mean, or a year, but it's, it's to pay them for the capacity that you're going to use for that commercial tap. And the reason that the cost is so high is because your tax is each and a half. It was a three quarter residential. It's still get you, but it'd be substantially lower.
And the cost?
It's still like five grand for residential.
Well, no, 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 I see. Developer agrees to pay the system development fees for treatment and transmission of water in the sum of 15,900 in sewer and sewer in the sum of 14,000.
They have a capacity fee for water and sewer, which is.
But um, equal 30.
Which is the 29, 30.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's, don't recall their residential rates for the three quarter.
And that, that is the biggest issue right now with, with 12 mile creek. And Union County is all about water and sewer now, where they're going to get their water. And how capacity they are reaching it very quickly.
$5,000 to.
In fact, my understanding is they're not even approving it because of.
So it doesn't surprise me, but still a lot of money.
Any other questions? There's a motion on the table. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't even vote.
Andy didn't even say anything.
I did. Did you?
I said aye.
A unanimous, all right. Open topics, do we have anything?
Nobody?
My God, hurry, hurry, hurry.
Next, review of action items and ongoing action item list.
I got a lot, sorry guys.
Okay, uh, we, we will send out communications to HOAs about donations for National Night Out. Uh, we'll have, uh, planning and the agenda for the Fall Town Hall meeting and the work session. Uh, Christina will discuss off duty security with Union County Sheriff's Office for Marvin Day. Did I forget anything? Not much on this one here.
Um, yard waste stuff, we'll work on that. And they can't remember liable to deliver gift baskets to you.
You're going to file those in, I say.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I've got that in my notes for this week.
Do we need to sign this?
Yes, before, yeah, before you two leave.
With that being said, do we send anything to them that officially notifies them that they've been brought in, annexed in?
What'd you say?
Tax bill.
Tax bill. Welcome.
I don't know if we do. I've never been here for an annexation, so.
We would let them know that the annexation was approved. I mean, we don't have any, a formal like welcome thing, but we'll send them an email.
Welcome basket.
We got a number of them when we were doing the roads for, uh, Weddington Chase. They, it was all uneventful more or less. It was just, and it's good to take it in a group. It's a lot easier to kind of do the paperwork. So, um, but the one offs, hey, we'll take them too.
Maybe you can get like a, um, like a, like a.
Certificate or something.
No, like a blurb from them like, we're saying you're going to be part of Marvin's. Yeah, like a, a testimonial. I'm serious, don't look at me like that, I'm serious. It'd be great.
I like, I like the welcome bag with maybe some microwave popcorn and, you know, whatever.
I mean, you know, some bundt, bundt cake or.
Bottle wine, maybe some cheese.
He's just that ex property, welcome.
All right, ongoing list, we ready?
Shoot.
Okay, so we've got streetlights and streetlights. I feel like both of those streetlights can be combined.
Where are you looking at?
Um, fifth, the one down and then, oh, here. And then like second one under the gray blur.
I'll get rid of the first one.
Okay. Um, irrigation well and then irrigation well, there's two of those. Under the gray halfway down and then towards the bottom of the page.
I'll get rid of the first one.
Um, solid waste recycling, begin negotiating, negotiation with the active. I feel like we're done with that. Underneath this first irrigation well. And then the solid waste impact fee, we've already sent those to the tax bill, correct? So that's done.
Solid waste and recycling, you're saying, begin negotiations.
Yeah, we've already done that. And then the solid waste impact fee, like that should be done. Okay, that's it.
All right.
Lady split, quick, quick, quick.
Council comments. Start with the one who says the most.
Nope, you did.
Going around the horn, Bob.
Uh, just welcome the Hunter Nester, uh, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, uh, staff, great, great job, welcome. Um, look forward to working with you. Law enforcement, glad to stay safe. Glad to see the streetings coming down and stay safe.
Okay, I've got a few. I know it's.